Around the northeast corner of that intersection, this is the Oak Meadows Golf Course. The Maple Meadows Golf Course is here. You've got the Addison North Waste Water Treatment Plant right there. And if we zoom in on it, you'll see that this is the 12th hole fairway right here. 13th hole is here. And there's some, an area that has basically been used for golf course maintenance facilities over the years. One problem with it is the flood plain. The total site is about 15 acres and the flood plain takes up almost eight and a half acres of that. Next slide. Like I said, total 14.7, 8.6 in the flood plain and leaving 6.1 acres that are buildable. So let me get into the details here about our analysis. First is the soils. From the soils maps of DuPage County, we learned that the native soils on the site are fairly poor. The soils map really only covers the first about five or six feet in depth. So the first five to six feet are relatively poor. But this site has been substantially filled and we'll blow that picture up on the next slide, Gary, if you will. And you can see that they've put in about 12 feet of fill. This was back around the year 2000 when the Forest Reserve dug an irrigation pond on the north side of the golf course and brought all the spoil material from that excavation and filled this site with it. Go on. So that's probably the same material that was native to this site. So those are probably poor soils. We did check with Addison to see if they had made any soil borings at their treatment plant. They did. There were two borings taken. This happens to be number 14. I don't expect you to read that. But basically, that says at about eight feet, they hit good soils in this particular boring. But the soils vary so much in the area that we would definitely recommend that if you pursue this site, you get additional borings first to find out if this is, if you can have good, if you have good soils below the surface. Go ahead. Another thing we had to check out was threatened and endangered species. Is there any threatened and endangered species on the site? First contact was with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Their answer was probably none, but we are going to require you to search for the eastern Massasooga rattlesnake to see if that's out there. Next slide. The next contact was with Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Likewise, they don't think that there are any out there. However, there are three endangered species that might be in the area that they are going to require the city to search for. The least bitter, the dwarf raspberry, and the Tuckerman's Sedge, a burdened two plants. Go ahead. And finally, DuPage County Forest Reserve made their own threatened and endangered species investigation and they found none. Okay, excellent. The next challenge is wetlands. There's really only potentially one wetland on the site that the city would have to mitigate. And that's this one which is in the kind of southwest area of the site. Now, that was not there prior to the Forest Reserve filling this site. In fact, it wasn't even on the plans that were drawn for this fill material to be deposited on this, on this site. So the best we can determine, and nobody's been able to confirm it, was that during the filling process, they realized that they were having a lot of soil run off the site. So they created what we think is a sedimentation basin. And the result is that they've blocked in some water and it can't get out and it's created this pond. So if that is the, in fact, the case, that that is a sedimentation basin and not a wetland, you won't have to mitigate a wetland, but you will have to preserve the same function on the site. In other words, you're going to have to make sure that sediment is detained on the site.
Can you clarify where that point is? Is it on the north side of the expressway or south side?
No, it is on the north. Here is the expressway up here. Addison Road is right there. So you come into the plant site and it's almost right at the entrance. Okay. Next slide. Another thing we did was an archaeological investigation. We hired the University of Illinois to do an archaeological investigation, Phase One. And they have determined that there are no cultural or historical significant resources on the site. And here's the two recommendations that they made. They're not recommending that it be eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places and that it be cleared for all cultural resource concerns. Next slide. We also did a Phase One environmental site assessment. This is where we went out and we looked for, are there any environmental issues on this site? And yes, we did find a few. First of all, there was, there was a leaking underground storage tank there at one time. That has been removed, but the case had not been closed yet as of April. It might be closed now. There is an above-ground fuel oil storage tank still on the site. There's possible asbestos and lead paint in the buildings. And there is a significant amount of trash on the site. Right in this area, this is where the leaking underground storage tanks were fuel, fuel tanks for the golf course maintenance vehicles. Like I said, that's been removed. The, this was taken in April, I believe, this photograph. And that was just about the time that the district was going to come back out and cap this with a clay cover. And that was the last thing they had to do to get it certified by the state. Next slide. This is the fuel oil storage tank behind one of the buildings. It still has a couple hundred gallons of fuel oil in it. That has to be removed. And then the next few slides, go ahead. This is inside one of the buildings. These tiles might be asbestos. This is one of the other buildings on the site. There might be lead paint here. It might be asbestos in those shingles. And then these, these next slides are some of the trash that's out there, mostly along the I-290 fence. Yeah, just go through these quickly. It's virtually a junkyard. You can see that there's just a lot of different components. There's a lot of stuff there that the golf course itself has disposed of over the years, but I'm sure that other, others have come and dumped their own trash there. Okay, when we started this project, the city had directed us that we should look at a 5 million gallon a day plant. That seemed reasonably, reasonable. It seems conservative. So the, so what we did was we looked at the site to see if it was large enough for a 5 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant. We also looked to see if we could put an artificial wetland on there for additional treatment of the wastewater treatment plant effluent. U.S. EPA calls that an enhancement wetland. And then lastly, the city had asked us, could, could we possibly put an area on that site where we could take our, our tree and landscape waste and do our chipping operation there? So we looked to see if we could fit all three of those on the site. This photograph down here is of the Gilbert's Wastewater Treatment Plant. I just put this on here because it has a wetland associated with it. So this is the kind of thing that we were thinking about is a mechanical treatment plant followed by a wetland that treats the effluent and the effluent's discharged from the wetland. Next slide. Okay, back to our site. Again, this is our 15 acre site with most of it in the flood plain. So this is the buildable area. And we created a conceptual site plan for that area. And here it is. Okay, this is the mechanical wastewater treatment plant right in the center. We would actually build our wetland on, on the area that's in the flood plain. The wetland does not have to be outside the flood plain. It can be in the flood plain. So we'd build basically two parts. There's a service road that goes right through here. That would be maintained. So we'd have a wetland here and then a wetland right next to Salt Creek, which is down in this corner. The landscape waste and wood chipping area would be at the front of the facility, next to Addison Road. And that's about one and a half acres that we've reserved for that. And then off of our actual site is the stormwater retention ponds. We talked to the, to the district and to their golf course manager. And we asked them, if we can't fit our stormwater retention facilities on our site, could we use yours? And they said, yes, absolutely. In fact, if you want, we can put the stormwater retention pond in the front of the 12th fairway and basically make a water hazard there that the, the golfers would have to drive over. If you remember, the tee boxes are up here and the fairway, it's, it's a long power five hole and the green is, is down at this end. So in this concept, we would be creating this water hazard on the golf course itself. Projected cost, as I said, right now, the cost is sitting at about $42 million. We assumed an annual inflation rate of four and a half percent per year, which would kick it up to $49.5 million by the time it was bid, if we were starting now with, with planning and design and got into bidding that quickly. Again, that excludes the transportation-related costs and the demolition of the existing plants. Financing options, there, there really is no grants anymore unless you're able to get a direct line item appropriation from either the Illinois State Legislature or the U.S. Legislature. More likely, you can get a water pollution control revolving fund loan. That's administered by IEP. Of course, there's the conventional bonds, revenue bonds and general obligation bonds, tax incremental financing, and then public-private partnerships. Next slide. Now, those public-private partnerships, they're really just variations of these things. Who's gonna, who's gonna design it? Who's gonna build it? Who's gonna finance it? Who's going to operate and maintain the structure? And then how is, how is the improvements, how's the ownership of the improvements going to be transferred? So I just listed a few of the ones that are available there. And if you wanted to get more into those options, we could discuss those further. Next slide. So as Gary said, it's decision time. You gotta decide whether you're going to go forward and construct a new facility, or if you're going to expand and remodel your existing plants, or if you're going to try and get one of your neighbors to treat your wastewater. I've got Addison and Itasca up there. I did talk with Greg Brunst over at Addison about the north plant. The north plant does have some capacity available. However, doesn't have five MGD. If, if you needed to have Addison treat all five MGD, they would have to explain, expand that north plant. And as, as you've already know, Itasca has been contacted. They have declined at least once. If you wanted to investigate that any further, I think that that would have to be a political discussion. I think that would have to be mayor on mayor or alderman on alderman to, to investigate that any further. I just wanted to say a little bit about new technology. You might have read in the newspaper that Roselle is pilot testing this, this new technology that was developed in Israel. It's called the Aquarius Multi-Stage Activated Biological Process, MSABP for short. We looked at that for Itasca. It was not cost-effective there, but it's something that you may want to consider. There's other technologies also available. There's something called a cannibal process made by Siemens. There's membrane bioreactors, vertical loop reactors, and a number of new technologies that you could look at to see if they would, would reduce your costs any. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. I have a few questions and then I'll call on fellow aldermen. So in terms of our next steps and our next decision, do I understand correct that we, in theory, do not have to decide tonight if we're gonna build a $50 million treatment plant, but really determine if we're gonna take that next step of trying to attain the land appropriate for this plant? And even though we would go forward, let's say we go forward with the land, then if factors change or if development doesn't come into this area, then in the future, we could go a different route? Mr. Home?
And even before that step, we need to make a decision, though. Do we want to go back? And then the last time, council had directed us to do so. And then, and now we're coming back to again, go back and reexamine our existing plants? And that was part of what we had said. Do we, do we want to reexamine our existing plants? Can we expand? Can we modify our existing plants to make them work? And I don't know that that analysis is going to be very in-depth before we come to an answer. Because I, I think a lot of us are of the opinion that we don't have a whole lot of room at those plants. But, but at least we have crossed the, are crossed the Ts and dotted the Is, so to speak, to make sure we've truly exhausted all the options before we then say, there's nothing, nothing left, no other options left, except to go pursue this new, new treatment plant. So I think before we, we start purchasing or entering into negotiations with the Forest Reserve, you know, do we want to finalize and make sure we're all perfectly comfortable with, with our analysis of our existing plants first?
Okay. Alderman Wesley?
I have a couple of questions for you. On the one issue that you said there was a tank stored on the property, that there could be land contamination from the seepage from that tank.
The leaking underground storage tank?
Right.
Oh, that, that issue has already been resolved. Any contaminated soil has been taken out. If there, if there is anything left, they've sealed, or they were about to seal it with a clay top so that it wouldn't evaporate into the atmosphere anymore. So...
So all the, so what you're saying is all the contaminated soil has been removed out of that site?
To, to the extent that, that it can be economically pulled out of there. And the state, the state is basically satisfied. They, you know, they've inspected it and they have determined that as long as a clay cap is put onto the, to the area now, it's fine.
Okay. May I follow up with one more?
Yes.
You said about boring for...
It's all borings, yes.
Right. If we find out that we cannot, if we do bore it, or what we call is boring, and we determine, I mean, how far is it gonna be safe enough to build a treatment plant? I mean, what is the, the treatment, I mean, the space in between that has until you hit the water or is there a threshold saying that if you reach this, it's off? I mean, is there a, a guideline on that perspective or no?
Well, soil, soil conditions vary so dramatically. You really have to take a look at each situation. You know, that's why you can't cookie cutter a plant from one place to another, because you really have to take into consideration the actual specific soil conditions that are there and design for those specific conditions. You know, if we, if we found that we had, for example, running sand, if it was just wet sand that you couldn't, you couldn't excavate fast enough, and you couldn't de-water fast enough to clear a hole, we would say, avoid the site. You know, I don't expect that, to see that here, you know, based on the soil borings that we received from Addison North's plant. I suspect that there's some good clay below the first, you know, eight, nine feet that you'll find there. Yeah, you're gonna have a high groundwater table there and there's gonna have to be some de-watering. But I don't see any sand there. I don't see any major problems with, with the excavation. The, the bigger issue is the fill. Obviously, you've got 12 feet of fill on top of another eight feet of probably poor soil.
And that would have to be hauled totally off that site. That cannot be used in that area at all.
We would, we would design the new facility to minimize the amount of spoil material that would actually have to leave the site.
So the price tag that you, I'm sorry.
One more.
The price tag that you have put on there, that is not, oh, that is not counting for transport of the soil off that property?
I'm gonna defer to my associate, who, Mark, Mark Major from Baxter and Woodman.
I worked on the estimate and preliminary concept for the plant. And we did include hauling off all the material that would be excavated for all the tanks and buildings and structures on the site. And then we included some costs to level off that 12 feet of fill to kind of spread it around more. Some of it even onto the chip and branch storage area, which is down a little lower right now. And then we also added in a 20% contingency allowance to all the costs to, just to count for any other unknowns that might come up. So we feel that the estimate we have is a conservatively high cost estimate. But we want, we would rather have it high than too low at this point in time. So I think, we think we've accounted for those items.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Alderman Coles and Alderman Police. And then I'm gonna make a motion to get something on the table. And then we can have further discussion if needed. Alderman Coles?
Yeah, Gary?
I thought you were going to have that through that, to the big two, so we know where we're going.
Again, that was, that was the direction of council at that time, was to thoroughly make sure that we've examined our existing plants before we just go and, and, you know, take the idea of abandoning them. So this study was done purely to look at the assessment of the site.
And the land.
Yep.
And they also have to figure in transporting the pipe from one spot to another, from the hard plant or the soft plant to the smooth plant.
Yes.
And that has to be included, too, that $49,000, $49 million is not transferred heavily.
No, that's correct. And that's why, that, that's why I indicated at the top of one of my slides, a 60 to $80 million question, because...
I know, I know. But as I just said, I thought, I thought you were going to have that through that, the part of the big two, so we know where we're going.
Well, we kept...
We say, yes, on a, on a project this big, we should have something on, what can be done with the other one? And that's what I thought you were going to do.
And that wasn't part of this scope. And that was, that was, we were gonna take this little, little pieces at a time. And this was the first little piece, was the site assessment. That would be, the next little piece would be to answer all those questions you just raised. Yep?
Gary, if I could add to that, as part of our study, we, we did happen to look at what, what corridor might possibly be available for transporting the wastewater, building the sewer or forest main to get, get it to the plant. And what we found is that at the, at the north, excuse me, southeast corner of Elizabeth and Addison, there's a parking lot. It's just above the, the picture here. But there's a parking lot for the golf course. A pump station could be built right in that corner, a forest main constructed parallel to Addison Road and down into, into the new plant site. And as, as it happens, there's a bike path scheduled to be built in that same area, but they don't have the funds to do it. If you happen to build that forest main there, when you restore the, the site, you could just put the bike path on top of it. Kill two birds with one stone.
Good idea.
I'm gonna go ahead and retract from earlier. I'm gonna call on each alderman and give each alderman a chance to speak and the mayor to ask questions. And then I'll go ahead and make a motion. Alderman Police?
Couple of questions. You guys are talking about 5 million gallons a day. What do we do right now? What do our plants handle right now?
I'm gonna defer that question to Brad Kettleson, our wastewater supervisor, who can kind of go through all of our existing flows for you.
The thing to understand is the 5 million gallons a day, that's a design average flow. That's not the maximum flow. That's just the average that the plant's gonna take over the course of one given day. Right now, our north plant design average flow is 1.97 million gallons a day. And our south plant is 1.13. So basically, it's just between the two, it's over 3 million gallons a day. We currently, 2006, total design average flow for both plants was 2.6 million gallons. So gives us about a half a million gallons to play with. And we're at design capacity. Right now, we're at about 80% capacity at both plants using 2006 flows.
Alderman Police, do you have any follow-up questions?
Just, when we took that tour, Gary, you said that north plant is pretty much at capacity already, right? There's, there's, it'll take no more, if we're gonna, anything's gonna take more, it's a south plant, correct?
We're reaching that, that regulatory capacity, what the IEP. Remember, the IEP won't let you get all the way up to your design, because they want a cushion there, okay? They want a cushion there so that you always have some area to, to, to go into when you start to exceed your flows. We're at about 80% right now. So we're right on the edge of being basically restricted status. I mean, is the term that the IEP would use. That, that basically raises a flag and says, hey, this plant is, is getting, getting to that regulatory capacity. So we're, we're there right now. If that hopefully answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Caddala?
Gary, I think you mentioned there was approximately a $20 million cost to renovate just the north plant? And as, did I hear that correctly?
The, the needs, the needs assessment was for the north plant. And they had money in there based on $2,001. Brad and I talked. We, we not only bumped up those dollars to account for the last six years, but we also threw in some additional funds as well for south plant. So the $20 million value would be for our plants, plural, to, to rehab them.
And to clarify, it is only rehab. There's no, there's limited or no chance of additional capacity. I mean, that 20 million is to really, very literally stay at the capacity we are.
Exactly.
Just to compensate for usage.
Replacing 20-year-old pumps and that kind of stuff, right.
Exactly. Okay. And then you partially answered my other question, talking about a pumping station at Addison and Elizabeth. Would you be able to gravity feed to that pumping station? Do we know that for sure yet? Or was there another question mark for possible additional monies to have to find later?
That's definitely a question mark. We've, we, we for sure are gonna have to pump from like the north plant location, for sure. Whether we can get south plant there by gravity?
The sewer lines going to the south plant are fairly deep in that area. Whether they can be tied into the pumping station in the parking lot is a question I just couldn't answer right now. They need to actually have a pumping station at south plant also.
Okay. As I, as I recall, the south plant's right here. The sewer comes in kind of on a diagonal into, into the sewer, into the treatment plant, correct? Yeah. And it's my feeling that we probably could have gravity flow from that flow that's tributary to the south plant now into that pump station at the corner of Elizabeth and Addison. But the north plant flow would probably have to be pumped to this pump station or at least close to it.
So, so to understand, there's a possibility that we may not be able to get that north plant land back or all of it. Part of that may be a pumping station, too. Maybe? Am I hearing that right?
You are, you are hearing that right. But the footprint of a pumping station, and I may, I'll defer to Baxter and Woodman on this, the footprint of a pumping station can be relatively compact. So if you want some more?
Yes, especially if you, if you were to build a submersible pumping station, you know, a remote in-system pumping station. The only thing you'll see above grade really is, is the control panel. The rest of it'll be below grade.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Carlson, we're, Carlson, right?
Carl, Carl Fisher.
Carl. We're fortunate that you did the site survey for Itasca as well. Due to some effort by Alderman Shockey and a follow-up that I did, that door may be reopening again. So could you give us an overview of that site and the comparative advantages of that one versus the one that we're looking at?
Sure. It, it doesn't appear on this map. And I don't think I've got a map on here that shows that. Obviously, you know that it's on, it's on Prospect Avenue, okay? North of Springbrook Creek. And in fact, just north of Springbrook is the old Itasca Police Station. And just north of that is the Itasca, current Itasca Public Works Garage, okay? Itasca has bought land from Commonwealth Edison. That's kind of an L shape around those two buildings, around the Public Works and the old police station. Plus, they've bought additional property from the Baha'i, where the, the owners of the property just to the north. And then we're just in the, in the process of acquiring one last piece from ComEd. That will exhaust what ComEd can provide to the village of Itasca because with the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway coming through, they're taking all of the area that Commonwealth Edison had hoped to use for their expansion of their substation. So that means they're gonna have to expand southward. They, they can't give up any more land to Itasca for that. Now, that land in total is just under 12 acres. It, Itasca is planning to build a four MGD plant there. We have left room for a little bit of an increase. We can go probably up to five with that scenario on that site. If, if Itasca and Wooddale were to build a joint plant on that site, then the Public Works facility would have to be moved off that site. There's not enough room on there for both Itasca and Wooddale to serve both communities, to build a plant large enough to serve both communities on that site. As it is, it's, it's pretty marginal. We would really have to squeeze it in. Now, you asked about the suitability of that site. I'm sorry. That site is, is fairly high. If you go up Prospect, you know, you, you're down low at Springbrook, at the crossing of Springbrook. And then the, the ground rises pretty rapidly to the north. So obviously, we are gonna have to pump the wastewater up to a higher elevation. And then from there, it'll flow by gravity through the plant. We are planning a constructed wetland there just as I had indicated here, that, that we would hope to, to build an artificial wetland, an enhancement wetland. The soils there are pretty decent. Again, it's high ground. It's not low ground. So we, we found good, good material there, good clay. Don't have any soil issues at all. There's no fill in the area that we'd have to remove or handle in some fashion. There is one wetland on, on the site that we're definitely gonna...